We'll call the committee of the whole meeting for the Elgin City Council for July 27th, 2022 to order. Will the court please call a roll?
Councilmembers Dixon?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rauschenberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan? Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting of July 13th, 2022. Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Court please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger? Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved seven-
Upstate. I wasn't here last week. Sorry.
That's correct. Motions approved six, zero with two abstentions. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is on both agendas, and this is the purchase of a Ford chassis bucket lift vehicle that is sitting on a lot, and if the council is so inclined, would be able to be purchased by the city quite shortly rather than waiting for two years. If there's no objection, the recommendation would be to advance this to the other business agenda at seven o'clock.
Discussion? Moving on.
Thank you. I'd like to consider items B and C together because they're companion pieces of sorts, and Eric Weiss, the water director, was here to answer questions from the council that it may have regarding these initiatives. Item B is an engineering services agreement with Engineering Enterprises, Inc., for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Fox River Habitat and Connectivity Study. As many of you know, there has recently been through the work of Senator Durbin and others, the ability to complete the fund or provide the funding that's necessary to complete the study on the Fox River Connectivity and Habitat Plan. Mr. Weiss is recommending that the city retain the services of Engineering Enterprises, Incorporated, to assist the city in the deliberations and discussions that will be used to develop the recommendations and reports as part of this study. Item C is a engineering services agreement with Engineering Enterprises, Incorporated, for the city's comprehensive water and sewer master plan. The last time the city engaged in creating such a plan was in 2011, and a lot has changed in those 11 years. The Comprehensive Water and Sewer Master Plan is not so much a policy document, but more so a blueprint that enables Mr. Weiss and everybody in his department to do the planning that's necessary as the city's growth continues and on the far west, and for the work that's necessary to replace the existing infrastructure. The work with the Army Corps of Engineers that contemplates the removal of the Kimball Street Dam will be used to inform the recommendations that are included with the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Master Plan to ensure that the removal of the dam, any impacts that that has on the river intake, will not negatively impact Mr. Weiss and his department's ability to make water for the city. Of note is I want to draw attention to also is while EEI is the principal on the Comprehensive Master Plan, Eric Weiss asked EEI to engage in a process that brought in a greater diversity of subcontractors. And so, for those that have a copy of the memo, on page three of that memo, you can see the list of the one, two, three, four, five contractors that are part of this Comprehensive Master Plan that have certifications, and they're as minority businesses, women-owned businesses, or small business certification. So, before there's a vote, I guess we can ask Eric Weiss to come to the podium, and if there's any questions from the council, he can answer questions regarding both of those. And then when you're ready, Mayor, you can proceed for voting on items B and C.
Mr. Weiss, would you like to give a quick summary of what you expect from EEI to do in item B as a consultant for the city?
Sure. So, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is picking up the 519 study at about 50% completion point. So, part of the effort that I feel it's in the best interest of the city to bring in the consultants is the expedited completion date of this study. They're anticipating having a tentative plan completed by the end of this year and actually presenting this to the public in February of 2023. So, I feel like as part of the Comprehensive Plan work and contemplating these alternatives, doing some analysis on some alternative improvements to the river intake in the event that the dam is removed, I feel like it is expedient for that process to have those same consultants there for the considerations through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers study.
I understand that there's some funding that may become available for this from the Corps of Engineers, correct? What is that funding and what would it be for?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So, the Army Corps of Engineers study, the Habitat and Connectivity Study, will essentially identify that all 10 of these dams along the Fox River from the Algonquin Dam to the Montgomery Dam should be moved for the habitat and connectivity of the river. Or that's what we're anticipating will come out of the study. So, the intention is that once they give this presentation in February of next year, or provide the draft study, that then they would be looking for municipalities or local agencies that own and operate and maintain these dams, whether they would like to participate in the removal or not. They'd be looking for direction by June of 2023 under their current schedule. If it gets, or if it gets, if they keep it in the final planning documents, essentially the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer would, study would incorporate this into a financial assistance program that would pay for up to 65% of the removal of the dam, and the remaining 35% would need to be from some local agency, from the state, from the DNR, something like that. That being said, it would only, the way I understand it, is that it only would account for removal of the dam, not improvements that kind of step down the dam or anything, any sort of fish ladder type construction, but it would be for full removal of the dam. So, the study is intended to identify what the immediate upstream shoreline would look like, and as the dams remove, it would obviously channel the water in a much smaller area so the shoreline would be expanded and would identify what that shoreline would look like. As I said, immediately upstream. I haven't had a chance to fully understand how far upstream they would be going with that analysis. But that being said, items like directly adjacent or just west of the river intake at the Leo Nelson Riverside Water Treatment Plant, there's a shallow wetland area. I'm not sure if that would be contemplated in the Army Corps of Engineers study on the impacts of reducing the water level, how that impacts it. To be quite frank with you, I'm not sure. I'll have to find that out in the future as the details roll out.
And we've discussed in the past about estimated cost to move the intake at $1 million. Are they going to pay for part of that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And any improvements to the intake, I'm not sure at this point. Actually, we just received an email through the Fox River Study Group earlier today indicating that they're still determining what would even be funded in this. What it sounded like to me in the original kickoff meeting for the 519, or the re-kickoff meeting back in June, it sounded like to me that they were only going to be looking at the funding of the removal of the dam, that it would be up to the local agency to determine those, or to foot the costs of anything additional like impacts to the intake structure. That being said, it sounds like they're still vetting that out on what that would look like.
And that's the smallest part. That's the least significant cost is knocking the dam out. The rest of it is the, the rest of the things that we have to do become much more costly.
Understood.
And the legacy cost then would be assumed by the city of Elgin as well. That would go with any restoration and those types of things.
Yes, that is my understanding.
And back to the point, EEI will be looking at all of those things for us as part of this study?
Right, right. Yeah. So, for clarification, we're talking about item B right now, but yes, yes, as their consulting effort would be helping us through this. And additional considerations, the Kimball Street Bridge is directly upstream of the dam, and that's also something that would need to be considered as to the timing. And I know that Public Works Director Mike Povence is looking into rehabilitation to that, and I want to, well, I shouldn't guess the date. I believe it was 2026 or 2027. So, I guess, I just wanted to point out that additionally, that's a consideration that we need to keep in this whole entire discussion as the Army Corps continues with their study.
There are questions from Mr. Weiss. Mr. Shaw?
How is Forward engaged in this?
They, so Forward is part of the Fox River Study Group. The local agency share in the 519 grant is coming from Fox River Study Group. So, approximately $200,000 is coming from Fox River Study Group's local share, and so Forward's participation in Fox River Study Group. And that's how I'm so familiar with how the 519 study is rolling out. So, they're engaged as far as participation in the Fox River Study Group and the discussions that are occurring, but that's the extent that I'm aware of.
And just a perspective, I thought, based on previous conversations, there were some very large benefits to Forward as well by having some of these dams removed as well was my understanding from just information they provided. So, I guess publicly I'd just state that, you know, they're a different municipal, they have a different boundary than the Elgin municipality, and so my expectation would be, as we continue to move along this journey, there's some partnership in that. And so, I'm not sure if folks from Forward are listening or not, but that would be my expectation, that there's a huge significant value to them as well.
As I recall, Art Malm, as he was presenting, did indicate a significant benefit. I'm not prepared to speak on that.
Correct. Yeah, and I wouldn't want to put you in that position, but based on what he did present, I would be curious, as we go through that study, what the benefits are to all folks that are being impacted by this as well.
Sure.
Anything else for Mr. Weiss? Ms. Rauschenberger?
Thank you, Eric. First of all, it's not clear or that intake might, would be impacted. It's not clear at this moment. It's still part of the study.
The initial study that was completed in 2019, I believe, in a draft form by Berns and McDonnell, had indicated an estimate of a two-foot drop. And yes, that would significantly, the removal of the dam would result in a two-foot drop in the normal water level of the river at the river intake, and that would significantly inhibit our water at the intake.
Okay. And how many other dams have been removed on the Fox River at this time?
Oh, wow. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for that question. I know of that, the South Potavia Dam was removed several years ago. The Carpenter'sville Dam is currently under the bidding process and permitting process to be removed hopefully later this year. Those are the only two that I'm familiar with. There may be many more. I don't know, Mayor Captain, if you know of any further ones?
Okay. And are other municipalities interested in having their dams removed, or they're just working with the Corps of Engineers as well?
Yes. I guess this is part of the reason that I wanted to get this item out to the council. I feel like, I feel like there's a public engagement component to this that's very important, and I feel like with the expedited schedule, having the consultant there, considering our interest through the entire study is very important for that.
I mean, I guess my feeling is the Army Corps of Engineer wouldn't be considering this, nor would our Fox River Study Group if it wasn't in the long-term interest of the health of the river and our communities. That's my thought. And so, if there's long-term costs that, because we have a river intake in the wrong place, I guess that's something we need to budget for. If, you know, depending on what the study says, that's one thing. And I also think we should be looking at our Fox River and the legacy cost of making it a better and more beautiful river than it currently is. I don't think Elgin takes advantage of the beauty that we have flowing through the middle of our town in particular. And there are several problems, as we all know. So, well, anyway, I look forward to it. I think it's great that we have, you know, a consultant to help us interpret what the Army Corps of Engineers is doing and how to speak with our community about that, the public about that. So, that's great. Onto, I know, the long-term study. Can we move on to that second part?
Sure. Yeah, both together.
Okay. So, this long-term study, 10, will be 10, 20, 30 years out, something like that?
Yeah.
For our water and sewer?
So, generally, the way we look at it is for the next, yes, to simply answer your question, yes. We'll look at the near-term rehabilitation and capital improvement projects. And this Comprehensive Master Plan will help us in our budgeting process and doing these projects efficiently, expediently, and-
Okay. So, we had someone come speak to us at the Sustainability Commission maybe about four months ago, a young woman, to talk to us about that there is also a plan that has to be turned into the federal government, mandated by the federal government? Is this part of that?
You're speaking of the Source Water Protection Plan?
Yes.
So, yes, this incorporates that work. So, yes, EEI was engaged in the Source Water Protection Planning Effort with us. So, this is a natural progression of that work to incorporate the Source Water Protection Initiative. EEI had also completed some pressure system, sorry, a distribution system pressure study for us a couple of years ago. So, they had updated our distribution system model. And yes, this is a natural progression of all of those things.
All of those things. Yeah, I just want to mention that I think it's an extremely important time to be doing this, not only for our infrastructure, but for our sources of water. I know if we face warmer summers, possible algae blooms coming up, you know, north of here, I know they discussed with us that our deep-water wells are perhaps run out in 20 to 30 years. And so, those are all big issues in this country. I know where people are pumping water out of Lake Michigan now, past us, down into Joliet. So, I know it's a critical time and a critical moment to be doing this study with all, not just our Fox River, you know, engineering study, but for all the climate and the growth. If we can manage that, should we be? Those are the questions I'm really looking forward to.
Sure.
So, thank you very much.
Mr. Thorne?
Thank you. I think all of us obviously are concerned about the intake and the impact it's going to have. And of course, with the addition of the big subdivision that's going to be going in far west, that's just a lot more water. The additional water needs and requirements that are going to all be going into the intake, two-foot drop seems like it's going to affect it quite a bit. And also, the study, as Ms. Rauschenberger mentioned, the beauty of our river, I'm a little concerned with the fact of what is it going to look like in some areas where it's going to be lowered so much that we want to use it, but there's already some areas that are so shallow that one month the boat can go through there and the next month it can't, depending on the rain. And if it's going to drop two feet, we're going to have some miniature islands out there. So, I'm sure that all of those spots all along the river would be included in renderings in this study. Was that your expectations?
That's my expectations. Again, I'm uncertain how far upstream the Army Corps of Engineers is going to be running that analysis. But that being said, yeah, that would be my expectation. And again, part of the reason that I'm requesting to bring the consultants in to be able to provide us that assistance in requesting that information from the Army Corps. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Weiss? Mr. Shaw?
Then we do need a motion.
Just a quick follow-up. Have you had information that has concerns about our wells drying up in 20 years or no?
The Illinois State Water Survey has indicated a decline in the wells. The numbers range pretty significantly, but a decrease in the available water from the deep wells, 30, 50 years, I've heard as well. So, but that being said, yes, the State Water Survey is indicating that the aquifer levels are going down, as is shown in Joliet, for example. They're now, the levels are now below the top of the confining layer, and so it's creating some water quality challenges for them.
Gotcha.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you.
We need a motion.
Make a-
B and C. B and C at the same time.
Motion to approve item B?
Second.
And C.
It's been moved-
You want to get it?
And C.
Yep.
Motion to approve item B and C?
Second.
Been moved in second to approve item B and C. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Court please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight, zero.
Item D is a proposed agreement with Cordigan Clark for architectural and engineering services for the renovations and additions to the Hemmans Cultural Center. This evening, we're going to hear information on this proposed project with the Master of Ceremonies Assistant to the City Manager Amanda Harris, and we're going to get some history on the Hemmans, what's planned as part of the rehabilitations, what Butch Wilhelmi has been doing, keeping the house in order for the number of years, Rich Hoke, all of the work that he's been doing to maintain the place, and then what we have on tap for the next 50 years and beyond at the Hemmans. Additionally, we're going to hear from local architect Eric Peppa, who provided the boffo, the boffo drawings of what we have to expect in the future. So, Ms. Harris?
Good evening, and thank you very much for letting me come and talk about all things art. I know I'm the loudest person here. So, as City Manager Colesel mentioned, we have a fun lineup of humans who are going to speak to their levels of expertise on a building that has been in operation for over 50 years and is a cultural icon here in Elgin. These are the topics we're going to cover. We're going to start with the history and the impact of the Hemmans, when it opened, why it opened, and what it's been doing since. Butch Wilhelmi will be taking over, talking about the programming that the Hemmans offers and has offered, as well as the various studies that have occurred over the years. And then Mr. Hoke will come up and speak about the repairs and the maintenance of such a large building and what the scope of that looks like, followed by Mr. Peppa coming up to talk about his beautiful design and a super fun cookie surprise that I'm very, very excited about. Lastly, we will go into the actual project proposal with the budget and timeline proposed with Cordigan Clark, which is reflective of the memo you have in front of you with a few minutes left for questions. So, without further ado, I'm going to go sit down and sweat nervously while Mr. Malat comes up to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. The Hemmans Cultural Center was built in the late 1960s, thanks in large part to a generous donation by Elgin Knight and heiress Hattie Peace Hemmans, who sought to establish and maintain a not-for-profit community building and auditorium for the benefit of Elgin. Hattie was born to Elgin socialites in 1873. Her grandfather Walter Peace was one of the founders of the first national bank of Elgin, and he was instrumental in encouraging the Watch Company to locate in Elgin. Hattie married Walter Hemmans and moved to 467 East Chicago Street here in Elgin. She was always known to wear a hat and gloves regardless of the occasion. Being that Hattie and Walter never had children, her will dictated that a donation of more than $1.25 million be given to Elgin to create this new community space. This donation was the spark that led to the creation of what is now known as the Civic Center Plaza. You'll recall that the plaza was recently renovated, revitalizing the idea of intentional placemaking. The original plaza contained five new buildings, which were all constructed in the 1960s. These buildings included a U.S. Post Office, City Hall, Illinois appellate Court, Hemmans Community Building, now the Hemmans Cultural Center, and lastly, the Elgin Township Library. Each of these buildings would surround an open community plaza and a large parking that was provided immediately to the south of City Hall. Skidmore, Owings, and Merrill was contracted to design the new Hemmans Cultural Center. The building design subscribed to the Mies Van der Rohe style of architecture, accentuating unobstructed and free-flowing spaces which can be seen in the lobby layout. This style utilizes a simplicity of design and modern materials demonstrated in the exposed structural steel columns and the large glass windows. Skidmore, Owings, and Merrill is famously known for having designed Chicago's Sears Tower, as well as the John Hancock Center. More recently, the firm designed the Burj Khalifa in Dubai, which opened in 2010. At more than 2,700 feet high and 160 stories, the Burj Khalifa is the world's tallest building. Construction of the Hemmans Cultural Center was completed in 1969, and the building opened to the public with a concert featuring pianist Ferrante and Tichor. I'll now turn it over to Butch.
While she's sitting there sweating nervously, I'll stand here sweating nervously. Since it opened in 1969, the Hemmans Cultural Center has presented shows and hosted rental vets of almost every kind, from Children's Theater of Elgin to BB King, Integrity School of Dance to Lady Smith Black Mimbazo, weddings to It's a Wonderful Life, I'll keep those separate, and the Elgin Symphony Orchestra to Vida. Hemmans audiences seen musicals, pageants, recitals, graduations, cultural events, talent shows, and even professional wrestling. Walker Brothers Circus, Ultimate Five male dancers, and the St. Petersburg Ice Ballet are just some of the events burned especially deep in my memory. As a half since it opened, the Elgin Symphony Orchestra remains an anchor tenant of the Hemmans, offering several concert weekends a year, as well as their kids' concerts for area schoolchildren, which is my earliest memory of attending an event at the Hemmans. Children's Theater of Elgin began in Exhibition Hall in conjunction with Elgin Summer Theater Program in 1988, and continues to present two full-scale productions a year on the Hemmans stage. Each in late winter, the Hemmans is home to several national dance competitions, and each spring dancers from a dozen area dance schools perform in their annual recitals on the Hemmans stage, bringing thousands of people to downtown Elgin with each performance, many for the first time. Since 2010, the programming of the Hemmans has been, I'm sorry, yeah. See?
It's all fine.
Yeah, really. Since 2010, the programming of the Hemmans has been almost exclusively as a rental facility, but the Hemmans continues to co-present First Friday Improv with Green Room Productions from September through June of each season. And we just wrapped up our Elgin Summer Theater production of In the Heights, which was presented with Up and Coming Theater Company. On September 24th, the Hemmans will present the 12th Elgin Short Film Festival, featuring films of 20 minutes or less submitted from around the world. Each of these annual events bring in people from around the region and even across the country to see some of the quality programming that Elgin has to offer. I also want to mention, we do several community programs such as the different community dinners, toy giveaways, and cultural events such as that. Now, we'll go on to some of the studies that we have done. In the late '90s, the city contracted with Cordigan Clark and Associates to create a master plan document for the Hemmans, which included recommendations to modify the Hemmans to accommodate expanded lobby space, main floor restrooms, and dressing area, expanded dressing area space, and relocated box office that could be accessed from the outside. It would add seating and create event space that could be used at the same time as the theater. Some of the projects developed during the study, such as the replacement of the rigging system and installation of the proscenium arch, were completed prior to the completion of the master plan. Other projects, such as lighting and sound system replacements, addition of blackout vestibules, and the installation of motorized electrics, were completed shortly afterwards. In the time between the presentation of the master plan and the development of the schematic design for the lobby addition by Richard L. Johnson Associates in 2006, the focus moved from the south side, moved to the south side with an addition that would provide the recommended lobby expansion and first-floor restrooms. The project stalled and did not move forward due to a variety of factors. The ERA study in 2008 found that the needs that were identified in the 1999 study did still exist, but the funding for such a project was not available at the time. In 2013, the City Council appointed various members of the community to participate in newly created Hemmans Task Force. This was to provide recommendations to the city manager and city council regarding the Hemmans Cultural Center operational, cultural offerings, and capital needs. The task force represented tonight by, who all is out here, Shar- Shar, I'm forgetting some of the names here. Shar Goldman, Aaron Rayberg, Greg Cherry, Margarita, and I think that is it, produced a full list of recommendations, which included several projects has since been completed. These include improving the outdoor area of the plaza to make the Hemmans more visible and accessible, and updating the dressing room area. The largest project to date is this north side addition and renovation, which will address eight of the remaining 13 recommendations at once. Moving into 2021, staff determined it would be best to work with a new firm to get a schematic design for the original north side rather than the south side. Was determined that it is more feasible to create an addition on the north side, which would address most of the previously identified needs at once. And with that, not a moment too soon, I'm going to turn it over to Rich. Thank you.
Well, the Hemmans, like every other building, needs maintenance from the day it opens till the day we basically tear it down and put it in the ground. And Hemmans is definitely no exception. Over the years, several improvements have been made to the building. Some of them were related to ADA improvements and safety. Some of those included an elevator. Even though an elevator was on some of the original plans for the building, it actually was not installed until 1977, and it was some of the first accessibility improvements. From there, we also had improvements to the lower level restrooms. At that time, we needed to provide accessible stalls. We also took advantage of that time to greatly expand the women's restrooms. At that time, there was lines out the door, and we doubled the space in the women's restrooms during that expansion. So it was an improvement in many ways. We also added new fire alarm systems to the building, greatly improving safety. We had an asbestos removal project over the stage, which actually started as a roof replacement project. The roof on the building needed to be replaced. At that time, fireproofing was sprayed on the bottom side of the roof deck over the stage and was open to the air. We figured that all the vibration and work on the roof was probably going to dislodge that and start contamination in the building, so we had to start with an asbestos removal project. So the exposed asbestos was removed, and the roof was replaced. We also had a replacement of the smoke doors. That was in 2015. They were not functioning properly. They didn't seal properly, so depending on which way the wind was blowing and the rain, often we had water on the stage. Occasionally, in the middle of a storm, we had a smoke door get caught in the wind and blow open, and we had a downpour on the stage. So those have been all replaced and updated. We also, in about '95, '96, started looking at heating and cooling for the building. When the building was originally built, the heating and cooling was a central plant operation, meaning that the heating and cooling actually came from City Hall. So we had boilers and chillers in this building. There was no boilers and chillers in the City Hall. Hot water and chilled water were piped underground from here over to that building. We determined that the cost to replace the underground piping, which was starting to fail, was actually more expensive than putting, actually, the first addition onto the Hemmans on the south side and adding a mechanical room on that space. The south plaza out there was about half originally grass. It's now a mechanical room underneath that space, and it becomes a full patio kind of upon the top. Along with that, we also had very significant roof leaks over the Exhibition Hall. The Exhibition Hall extends out beyond the building, and it has the paver area over the top of it. Previously, that was, it was like rain in the Exhibition Hall, and that would last for weeks after rain because it actually created a pool underneath there that would hold water. So a new roof was put on there. That's been over 25 years now. That was just approved for replacement on that, so that has extended past its typical The, some of the other things were done as improvements for operational space and to improve the, you know, appearance of the space, some improvements to lobby, basically remodel and update. We just completed dressing room updates on the back. It's a major change from what they, because they hadn't been touched for 50 years, basically. And there was also some stuff, as Butch mentioned, proscenium improvements, seating replacement, lighting replacement on the stage, also lighting replacement in the house. We're looking at some lighting, we've done lighting replacement in the lobby, all to bring it up to newer standards, LED, improved efficiencies, a lot of different things along the way. The building will continue as we move into the next phase. To need maintenance, it'll continue to need improvements. That's why I have a job. And I appreciate that, so. I'll turn it back to Amanda.
So there's a whole bunch of history and all sorts of stuff, and now comes the really exciting part. And when Van White, Kate O'Leary Special Event Coordinator is going to hand out something for you. So these are the cookies I talked about that I'm entirely too excited about. We had a local artist create a Hemmans cookie that is hand-piped. Someone has way too much patience, and then had her design the actual addition as a second cookie. So Kate is handing the second cookie out, so you can see what it'll look like.
You can eat what it will look like.
You can eat what it will look like. Of course, about an hour ago, Rich suggested we should have had frosting so you can actually stick them together, but we did not plan well enough for that. So that's my parlor trick for the evening. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Eric Peppa. As you've heard and as you now can see, we started working with him back in 2021, and he and his team at Allen and Peppa designed this absolutely beautiful renovation that we are all totally in love with, and he is here to speak a little bit about that inspiration and the intention, and show you a little bit more of a detailed look at what they did. So, Mr. Peppa. It's okay, they have cookies now.
Flatter me. So, yeah, I'm Eric Peppa. I know a lot of you, and I was honored for Amanda and Butch to ask us to help them kind of conceptualize in addition to the Hemmans, which, you know, this has been kind of in the mind of various people for 20-plus years, and so there's a lot of thought that's gone into this. Butch explained why the north side is really where we focused. Programmatically, we need a box office, we need additional office space, we need expanded area for overflow. And so really, we came to the process knowing that, that we had to find a way to make the addition work on the north side. The idea for this really, you know, the whole campus, the international style, Skidmore, Owings &amp; Merrill SOM, you know, is just, is iconic, and so we didn't want to alter that too much. We wanted to kind of work with that, with the theme, with the module, and say, what can we do to make this look new, modern, in addition, but not to detract from the original building? As I said, it's iconic, you know, it's a glass jewel box. So what we did was, we took the program space essentially around 9,500 square feet, two stories worth, and let me see if I can, oh, there we go. So we took the module and we did the addition, and we canted out the front, basically, kind of a leaning into the community, or a, you know, it creates a little bit of energy, and something that, you know, plays with the original, but yet has a more, has a 21st century feel, I guess. So that was the kind of the overall idea behind this. The interesting thing, and the tricky thing with all of this, as far as the addition, is there's about a 30-inch drop. As you know, when you come out on the north side, there's steps and ramps down to the parking drop-off area. And so what we decided to do was drop it inside the addition. So we do have, do you have actual plans of this?
We don't have plans.
You don't have the plans here? Okay.
Can I just go for a moment, you can see that it drops down?
Yep. What's that? Yeah, we can't see it here, but, so we did the 30-inch drop inside between the main lobby and the addition lobby. So we're adding space, but once people exit from the new lobby, they're at grade, they're at drive-up level. So, and we have a ramp inside that provides accessibility.
That picture does show that.
Yeah, the bottom, the bottom left, you can kind of see that. Yeah, let me go back a little bit here. So this is a view from the inside, so for the, in the upper right image, that is the existing part of Hemmans Auditorium, and we literally kept the structure, the existing north structural facade, and we're removing the windows. What we were able to do was create the floor level so that we could take advantage of the existing structure and mullions that you could, you can walk through it. So there's a change in height on the second floor relative to the second floor balcony, and that's accessed by a ramp, but it all ends up working out. So let me just walk you through a little bit of, I'm sorry, I'm, so we don't have the floor plans. You have floor plans in your, in your package, I assume? So the main entrance is still from the north. You come in, there's a gathering area there. We have box office in the northeast corner, which is accessible both from the outside, people walking up to the Hemmans, you know, if the doors are locked from the outside, people can buy tickets just through the exterior box office windows, as well as from the inside. On the inside, obviously, the bathroom issue is a big concern, so we were able to add a lot of bathrooms. I don't know offhand what the count is, but we exceed the minimum plumbing requirements, so we provide accessible bathrooms at the main level, which, you know, forever has been an issue at Hemmans. And that's really, we have a receiving area, extension on the west side, and really, that's all we have essentially room for on the first floor addition area. It's about 4,500 square feet. The second floor is office space to the west, and large gathering space for overflow or intermission, private gatherings, which you can see here in the large rendering. That would be the second floor gathering space. And that overall gathering space can be partitioned. We have movable partitions that can separate that into separate private gatherings, and a bar area for serving drinks and snacks at intermission time.
Also, the restroom on this level.
And there, yeah, there are restrooms on the second level as well for both the gathering space and office space. And then, oh, don't have, well, you can see here, we, the balcony, we have a balcony that comes out even farther from the north addition that kind of surrounds the addition, A provides protective, you know, covering for people getting dropped off, as well as purchasing tickets, but then also overflow space from the second floor. So that, in a nutshell, is the addition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So moving to the nuts and bolts, we'll talk a little bit about the proposal and what is actually in the memo that you'll be voting on tonight. So the city issued an RFP to take this project to the next level, and Corderan Clark is the recommendation for moving forward. They have worked on the Hemmans before. They also have experience in similar projects. Here you can see the Addison Center for the Arts in Addison, Illinois, as well as the Paramount Art Center in Aurora. The Paramount is famously a historical building, so that speaks to the nature of their firm being able to work with historical buildings such as the Hemmans. They, the thing that is really spoke to us was the holistic approach. When they work on a project like this, it's not just about one piece, it's not just about creating a user experience or adding a bathroom. It really is holistic. How are we being energy efficient? How are we utilizing the natural light, which the Hemmans has in spades, right? How are we utilizing the natural landscape? And how does this, how does this building fit into the bigger picture of the Civic Plaza? Again, speaking to what Hattie Hemmans set out to do all those years ago. So their approach was something else that was really interesting. They use a lot of technology. I learned a whole lot of words, and what they mean, they, you can see a little bit more about it in the memo, but specifically infrared thermography, clash detection, drone technology, and farrow laser scanning. All of these things essentially look at the building in ways that the human eye can't, and they help us make sure that we are being energy efficient, that we're catching issues before we even, as human eyes, know that they are occurring. And then the building information modeling, BMI technology, creates a 3D model, so when you're a novice like me and you don't know how to read all of the fancy pants plans, it's something that you can look at and actually walk through and experience the building in a very tangible way, which is really exciting. They also have sustainable and LEED-certified, no, partners who are part of the project team. It is a full-service firm. They bring everything to the table. They really focus on that quality control, the DEI management, things that the city and city council have demonstrated, a desire to really focus on, so that is another reason that we wanted to recommend this group. When I say full service, that means that they include architecture and engineer managers, mechanical, structural, electrical, and interior designers, as well as acoustic specialists, which is really important when you're talking about a performing arts center such as the Hemmans. This is the project timeline proposal. The project will kick off in August, you know, maybe, and design development and construction documentation will occur from August to December. What that means is, we will take this beautiful design that Allen and Peppa have created and really dig into it a little bit further, poke those holes, make sure that we're thinking about this project in every way possible, especially with the new fresh eyes at the table to say, hey, did you think about this one extra thing? January 2023 brings us to construction bidding and negotiation. Construction is anticipated to take place February through August of next year, with a goal of completion in September of next year. I will just note here that the one thing that, knock on wood, works in our favor, that the Hemmans is really most busy in the evenings and on the weekends, which typically is not construction time, so we're able to really balance that scheduling to the favor of balance that scheduling to the favor of our renters and our general operations as well. Moving on to the design bidding and budget, the design schematic, as we've seen, has already been completed. The, the further breakdown moving forward with Cordergan Clark is as shown with design, development, and construction drawings, and construction bidding and administration coming in at $471,878. And just so everyone is aware of what the full project, project scope is, this is the anticipated project budget. We are not voting on this tonight. Obviously, this will be something for council to consider as part of the budget later, but just so there are no surprises, this is at current moment what we are anticipating the project cost, which is essentially $5.9 million to create this addition and update this building. Again, bringing in those restrooms, additional gathering space, that awning, that outdoor box office area, that beautiful second floor balcony, additional offices, which makes sure that that building remains energy efficient, and that access to the loading dock as well. And a whole bunch of stuff I'm probably forgetting. So, I just threw a whole bunch of stuff at you very, very quickly, and I will open the floor up to questions. Hopefully, none of them are for me, and all of these really knowledgeable people can answer them in my stead.
Need a motion and move forward, then we'll do our questions. Been moved to the second for approval. Are there any questions for the, the group, I guess? Ms. Powell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thanks to staff and the architect, architectural firm and members of the Hemmans Task Force that are here in the audience today. Learned a lot. Did not know the, the history of the Hemmans, so that was very helpful to, to get that, that, that history and that basis. Just a few weeks ago, the city council approved a study to look at the arts in our community. Will we somehow be able to use that information that we get from that study to help tweak the design of, of, of the redesign of the Hemmans moving forward? I'm, I'm just hoping that the two will complement each other versus clash with each other. Is, is there a way, are there plans to be able to utilize, or is the timing of this, does it enable us to utilize the feedback that we get from that in the work that we're, we're doing to the Hemmans?
That's a great question. Yes, absolutely. So, part of the conversations that I've had with Create Today Consulting, who are the, the firm who are leading that, are, we have this potential huge project coming up. Surprise! Be prepared to discuss that, kind of a thing. So, one of the, the big components that they will be reviewing is, is our existing venues and what potential components could, could exist in the future. So, when they review programming and how we use our venues, they will all be a part of that. Now, that said, I, I believe that there has, there's plenty of demonstrated need for, for the pieces that we're solving already because we have had so many studies and, and, you know, the task force and so on, who've made the same recommendations sort of over and over. I, I think that more that group will figure out how the city can help support that programming space in new and interesting ways based on community feedback.
No, thank you. That makes sense. And to your, to your last statement, the, the comment or the question I commonly get from residents is why don't we hold more concerts and more things in the, in the Hemmans versus, as you pointed out, we're using it primarily as, it's, it's used primarily as a rental facility versus a venue where we host concerts and plays and different things like that. I think that's one of the common comments I get from people. So, hopefully, between the, the changes that this is bringing to the Hemmans, as well as the information that we will get from the study, will help us hopefully move in that direction a little bit more in the future, because I think that that will be a benefit to the community, especially if we're, you know, really moving forward and envisioning, envisioning ourselves in Elgin as a hub for arts and entertainment in the Fox Valley. I think this is, it's a huge asset to the community and definitely look forward to the, the changes that are being proposed. It's, it's been a long time coming. And every time I go to the Hemmans and have to make that long journey downstairs to go to the restroom, I, I, I think about, wow, it's, it's, it's time. So, glad to see this moving forward. Probably the only thing that I, I wish we could do differently, but I, I don't think the way the building is situated and, and set up, it really allows for this, is to really be able to take advantage of it being on the river and, and being able to use that and have, have access to that, you know, as a, as a, as a nice backdrop. But that's where the loading dock and everything, the back of the stage areas is kind of set right there. That's probably the only thing I, I wish were, were different, but that was determined probably more than 50 years ago. So, thank you. Those are, those are just my comments and observations, and I will definitely be supporting this.
Any further questions? Mr. Thor.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Enlightening, and I'm, I love the Hemmans. As you all know, those that know me, I've been engaged in the city and activities for many, many years. I think the first time I was in the Hemmans was 49 years ago, when our high school class had a graduating activity there. And then throughout the years, Butch handed me the microphone many, many times as I was on stage for the city's follies and other programs. So, it's a true Elgin gem, and enhancing it and upgrading it is worthy. I'll be supporting it, and I welcome this project. Thank you.
Ms. Rocheberger.
Thank you, Mayor. I also had on a list here, the number one thing was the river. Following the councilperson Tish's point of view, that it is, I think when they built the Hemmans, you know, we had all the buildings back to the river instead of taking the river into consideration. But I'm hoping that, you know, maybe with the balcony facing to the north, that there is some river view and some consideration with the new front. I do think we, we miss out on that. Just a couple other comments. One was, are there, is there going to be any major updates of acoustics or not really?
That's definitely part of what Cordergan Clark is going to bring to the table. The addition itself doesn't have a whole lot of need for, when it comes to acoustics. So, if we were to look at something like the actual stage and the theater space, that'd probably be something a little bit different, but we can definitely consider that for the future.
Okay, just thinking. And also our lower level or the basement, I know this is, you're right, we're just talking about the front, but it just seems like it's a space that could be somehow gussied up or something. I don't know.
It's, uh, it's definitely on the, the list for future considerations as we talk about the design development. You know, storage, as, as both Butch and Rich can speak to, is, is an issue at the Hemmans. And so, we've, we've already had a few conversations about how Exhibition Hall and that lower level might play into this, this addition and add some, some much-needed bits and bobs and, and gussy-ing, as you said.
Right. Then the last thing, again, doesn't relate to our new addition, but the center row, is that still not, you know, maybe for further consideration? Okay. But thank you so much. I'm so excited to see this done, and I want to thank everybody that's worked on it. And I think, you know, again, I've spent a few years in New York City, and whenever I see the Hemmans, I think of the Lincoln Center, because it has that same, part of the Lincoln Center has that same facade with those beautiful windows and lights out to the world. So, I'm excited to have it done. Thank you very much to all of you.
I should also mission, mention that Cordergan Clark representatives, John and Brian are here if, if anybody has questions. I should have done that a long time ago, but they're here now, though.
Anything else? Mr. Shaw.
Just a couple of questions. You know, I'm, this will need to come back into the agenda two weeks from now, correct, in the regular council agenda?
That is correct.
Okay. Just, just one request from staff, since I believe this is coming from TIF funding, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct.
I guess I would just ask for an updated TIF budget. So, if, when I look at the 2022 proposed bud, or a, a budget that we approved, you know, we typically have a table in there that, that tracks revenues and expenditures from the TIF. I think it'd be helpful for this large of an expenditure that we just see an updated table, especially due to some of the expenditures, I'm assuming that were planned on that, are probably now, have a larger dollar now, just due to inflation and some additional higher costs. Just want to see the impact of that as well.
Understand. And if Chief Off, Chief Financial Officer Deb Marocchi allows, we'll be able to, to talk to the additional $3 million in revenue that we'll be receiving from the state through different grants, through the, through the advocacy of Senator Castro and Representative Mueller, that will help recharge our TIF coffers as we go ahead with this project as well.
Gotcha. Perfect.
We'll, we'll take care of that for you.
And then just, just to make sure I'm correct, it's like, it would be roughly around like 6.2 million then total if we take into account like the, the, the amount that we're approving tonight, plus then the future build-out phase, correct?
Yes, that is the anticipated cost. Obviously, we'll have a, a more accurate one following the construction drawings.
And then kind of going back to the previous meeting that we had, the work that we approved for the exterior, how does that work that we approved kind of tie in with the construction work? Is that, because I thought some of the work that we approved last week was for some tiles on that north side. How, should I say, why are we doing that? And then going back and doing a construction project over that. Could I get, is there someone that could speak to that?
I, I can absolutely speak to that. It may sound nonsensical, but it was actually a very thoughtful order, and I'll show, I'll tell you why. As, as Rich Hoak spoke to earlier, the original pavers over Exhibition Hall, and then again, they're on the south side, were installed in 1995, 1996, well past their lifespan. So, they've been needing to be replaced for some time. When we started looking at the impact of this project, we understood that if we were going to do this, it was going to severely impact access points into the building, and so both projects couldn't happen at the same time. In order to maintain the safety and the usage of the building, that Exhibition Hall roof and those pavers there had to be replaced first, so that when we do shut down the north side of the building to do this, that access and safety from the south and the west there, is that east? See, I'm so bad, remains, remains open. So, they kind of balance one another.
Okay. So, the work that I thought we approved, that was for, for pavers and, and the replacement of that roof on both the east side as well as the pavers on the north side, is that not accurate?
South and...
Be on the south side.
The south side and, and the east side.
And the east side of the building.
Not the north side.
Stops at the north corner.
It stops at the north corner.
Okay, that makes sense now. Thank you. Okay. The other question I always have, so when we approved the previous bid two weeks ago, that was before we knew about this project. So, my question is, are there other projects that are in flight in the planning process that we had like a full picture of what we're doing with the Hemmans building over the next, say, three to five years? So, instead of us looking at just this project two weeks ago, now this larger, much larger one, are there other things that, that are being proposed that we should know about, kind of like as a holistic plan?
So, that will be part of the arts market study and the strategic plan that we're embarking on right now and, and will potentially approve in January, is, is really to kind of define what those projects look like. I can tell you at the moment, we are in the process of preparing budget proposals for city council to consider at the end of the year. And there is nothing to this scope in, in the future that I'm aware of. I mean, anything is possible, right?
I'll, I'll reword my question differently. Anything outside of kind of what we would consider normal maintenance and repairs? Are we considering any additional things outside of that category?
For the Hemmans?
Yes.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Just now, now the history question that I didn't get. How much did it cost to build the Hemmans originally? I saw, I know that the grant was for $1.25.
I knew you were going to ask me that, and I of course don't have that answer.
Okay. I just was curious, because I was, I was...
I was trying to figure out how to get that answer from all the way back in the 60s.
Oh!
Oh, and that's why he's here. He's the professional.
He made a motion with his, you know, he...
Well, just to give you a little context, what I was able to find was that the entire complex, in turn, the, the land acquisition and the improvements in the five buildings was $12 million. And the, in City Hall was $2 million. So, but I wasn't able to find anything specifically to the Hemmans, so.
Gotcha. Dollar in the 60s, wow.
Went a lot further.
Okay. I think that was all of my questions. I will move forward. I, I will be supportive of it. It is TIF funding. There's a, there's an end of life to the TIF fund, at least in Toby's viewpoint. I know other folks think this should, might be longer. And, and so I think, I think it's warranted that we, we look to ramp that down. So, that's why I will be very interested in that, that updated budget to, to, to just provide a full picture. But tonight, I will be approving this.
I will just reiterate what City Manager Coles said. I had in my notes, and then Big Fat didn't say it, was that the, the, the funding secured by Senator Castro, Representative Mueller, in the amount of $3 million, made this project feasible to bring forward to city council for review. Before, as, as we heard from Butch, it's, we've talked about it, but haven't really gotten there.
And I should have said too, you know, I was disappointed though in the materials, because I, my first question when I walked in tonight, $6 million? A no-loading dock? Because I didn't see the materials, but there is a loading dock. So, that was, I'm assured of that. So, so I understand that most people might not believe this.
You can drive right onto the stage.
But I have set up, you know, stages within the Hemmans, and you compare the Hemmans to ECC, it's much nicer to back the truck up at ECC, so I am looking forward to a loading dock. Plus, if we do look at the future of the Hemmans, I mean, that, if I'm not mistaken, that has been an issue where certain shows won't come to Elgin due to not having a loading dock.
It certainly makes it more difficult.
Yeah. And then due to even the fact of, of even the, the path of trying to get some things into the Hemmans, I think if this, if I'm not mistaken, the loading dock would create like a straight shot right into the stage then for larger...
It does.
...projects and things like that as well.
You see right there, that black square on the top picture, in the bottom right, that black square will drive straight onto the stage.
Gotcha. And then I would just say, knowing some of the people that drive larger moving vans, I would just want to ensure that the over, the underpass is, is larger, the overhang is high enough.
Or protected.
This is not Long Grove.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved at zero. Congratulations, everybody, for the presentation, and we'll look forward to the project. This time, I entertain a motion to adjourn to the regular council meeting.
Second?
Been moved to the second to adjourn. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Here.
Rochenberg?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stephan?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Moved in second for approval, any corrections or additions? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Upstayed.
Rochenberg?
Upstayed.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved six-zero with two extensions. Brings us to communications, we have two people signed up this evening, Joe and Armita Dominguez.
Hello, good evening. You're getting some flyers from, for our Hope Fest, which I'll be announcing about. You know Joe, Joe has a birthday tomorrow, eighty-two years young.
Oh, Joe, happy birthday.
Still going strong. And we have April Nueves, which is one of our community liaisons. Okay, good evening, Mayor Captain, council members, city manager staff, and members of the community present here tonight, and those on the video. It is great pleasure that we are here tonight to invite you all to a community event. Algen's New Life Covenant, which has the pastors of Pastor Abby and Cindy, his wife, will be hosting its annual back-to-school Hope Fest. This Saturday, the thirtieth, from ten a.m. to two p.m. We are located at twenty-two fifty West Highland Avenue. And our phone number is eight-four-seven-seven-four-one-six-six-two-nine. This event will include activities and service for children and adults. We will have back-to-school supplies, backpacks, free haircuts for the children. We will also showcase our local nonprofits and our health services, including opportunities to receive free information in regard to financial health, and insurance, and any immigration law information. Our local dentist, Dr. Chu, and her staff will be providing us with free toothbrushes and toothpastes. And of course, our festival will feature carnival games, bouncy houses, candy, and much more. But of course, we are faith-based, and we will have a prayer tent. You'd be surprised how many people use that, they just need someone to come together with them and pray and agree with maybe some issues or things that they're needing. We hope that you and the community will join us with, to support these families. I really would like to thank the city of Algen, who is always so supportive of us. Mayor will be coming, he'll be there at ten-thirty, and so will Chief Lally, who is always supportive of us. And of course, I'm inviting all you council members, if you could stop in just for a few minutes, you know, say hello to some of your constituencies, and do what you do. Also, we're gonna have our fire engine number three. We're gonna have the Algen Police SWAT truck, which we call the Beast here in Algen. Mr. McGruff is gonna be there for the kids, and he was, that was requested, they wanted Mr. McGruff. Okay, and I'd like to do a shout-out to our donors, and I call them donors, sponsors, because we don't solicit. We feel as a faith-based community to give back to the community, and that's why we do this. And, but if, of course, if someone asks, well, can I donate, I sure am gonna take their money. So, I wanna appreciate Representative Ann Waller, who will be attending. Senator Christina Castro, she'll be, won't be able to, she'll be in a parade, but she donated also. Kilpatrick Jones and Hursocks, our local insurance agency, and you know Karen Jones, and she always comes out, she comes out, she not only gives us support and monies, but she also comes out in volunteers. We also have a contribution this year from Algen State Bank, and Oak, I think it's Oak Street Health, they're one of the newer ones, and they'll be coming out. And of course, last but not least, the members and friends of New Life Covenant, who donated all the backpacks and school supplies, and over a hundred volunteers are gonna come and put this on. It takes, you know, that for an event like this, it takes many hours before, and even though that event is four hours, it takes so much time to assemble everything together. Of course, we do that because we love the community, we're part of the community, and we're giving back to the community. We give honor and glory to our Lord for the privilege to serve. God bless you, and have a great evening, and I hope to see you Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you Saturday.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to bids. We have one, bid number one is number two-two-zero-two-nine, two thousand and twenty-two, West Area Resurfacing.
Mayor made the motion to award the bid to J.A. Johnson Paving Company, the amount of two million, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Second. Been moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Upstayed.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved seven-zero with one abstention. Item two is bid number two-two-dash-zero-three-six, leaf processing and disposal.
Mayor made the motion to award the bid to Midwest Compost LLC, in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero. Item three is bid number two-two-dash-zero-four-three, lighting control panel replacement.
Moved to award the contract to Kellenberg Electric, to replace the lighting control panels at the center, in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero. That's, brings us to item one, is a consideration of petition twenty-nine-dash-two-two, at twenty-five-thirty Mason Road, seventeen fifty-five, seventeen sixty-five, and seventeen seventy-five Capitol Street, preliminary and final plat of subdivision to re-subdivide approximately ten acres of vacant land into three lots. Mr. Malak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this property is located at the southwest quadrant of Randall Road and I-90 with frontage along Capitol Street. This is I-90, here is Randall Road, and this is Capitol Drive. McGrath Honda is here, Pace Park and Ride here, the new Wood Springs Suites Hotel is here, this is San Filippo, this is Avondale Estates of Algen, and this is Candlewood Suites. A B C P Investments requests approval of a re-subdivision of ten acres of vacant land. The proposed two-point-two acre Lot One and the five-point-seven acre Lot Two are located east of Capitol Street, and include parts of the Capitol Corporate Center subdivision that was annexed in two thousand and seven. The two-point-five acre Lot Three includes land located north of Mason Road, the annexation of which will be completed at the next city council meeting. An annexation agreement for Lot Three was executed in April of twenty-sixteen. The applicant is working with a developer that is contemplating a new ninety-five-room Holiday Inn Express on the proposed Lot One. It is expected that the hotel will conform with city zoning and architectural review requirements, such that it need only apply for a building permit. Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval, subject to conditions outlined within your packet.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval, subject to conditions, any discussion? Mr. Shaw?
Excited to see the project moving forward. I guess I was kinda surprised, because I felt like in some of the previous updates we had gotten, and some of our development partners, that I didn't feel like maybe hotels had quite rebounded yet, so it's kinda exciting to see that this is in the works.
Anything else? Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero. Item two is a resolution approving final plat of subdivision of Wedgewood Capital re-subdivision. Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero. Item three is a resolution authorizing final execution of the final plat of easement from Kane Holdings Limited Liability Corporation, and acceptance for ownership and maintenance, certain public improvements within the site located at seven forty-five Tollgate Road. Move for approval?
Second.
Been moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero. Item four is a resolution authorizing execution of a purchase agreement with Power Equipment Leasing Company for the purchase of a new lift vehicle to repair and maintain streetlight infrastructure.
Move for approval?
Second. It's been moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero. Item five is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to an agreement with Andres Medical Billing Limited for emergency medical service billing and management reporting.
Move for approval? Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero. Consent agenda. Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero. Miscellaneous business. Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero. Announcements, the next committee of the whole meeting will be Wednesday, August tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six p.m. in the city council chambers. The next regular meeting of the Algen City Council will be Wednesday, August tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven p.m. in the city council chambers. Entertain a motion to adjourn back to the committee of the whole. Salute.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn back to the committee of the whole, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. Now, motion to reconvene the committee of the whole. Salute. Second. Been moved in second to reconvene the committee of the whole, clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stephan? Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes. Mr. Manager, I think we're on item E.
Agreed, this is a design and construction engineering services, engineering services agreement with Gualt Hamilton Associates for the two thousand and twenty-two CDBG Neighborhood Street Resurfacing Program. The area contemplated for this work is the North Jackson Street neighborhood, that includes Mill Street, Harvey Street, Hawk and Hawkins Street.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been moved in second for approval, any discussion? Just a comment, you know, we've been doing these for many, many years, and this is really a real, really a valid way and a nice way to use black grant money to help neighborhoods. And clean streets, new streets, help improve the homes in the neighborhood, and helps improve the feeling of goodwill from the city and the community. Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero.
Item F is an agreement with School District U forty-six for the provision of school resource officers at the Abbott, Ellis, Kimball, and Larson Middle Schools, and at the Algen, Larkin, and Gifford Street High Schools.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval, any discussion? Ms. Powell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Captain. I would like to ask Chief Lally to come to the podium and answer a couple of questions, and while she makes her way to the podium, obviously, we've had a lot of discussions about school resource officers here at our council meetings over the past few years, and there have been a lot of changes in how Algen officers are used in Algen schools as school resource officers. As one of the council liaisons to the Algen Task Force on Policing, there have been a lot of conversations around school liaison officers as well. So I wanted to ask Chief Lally to kind of, kind of bring us up to speed on how some of the changes that we, that have been made over the past few years have affected how officers are, are working in the schools, the YEP program, which is covered in the memo, but just for the benefit of the audience, if you can kind of speak to some of the positive changes that you're seeing based on direction that has come from, from the dais here, and initiatives that have been coming from your department as well.
Yes, so the school resource officer program, we had plenty of discussion in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, and in late two thousand and twenty, we decided to look at our program, Operation Home Front, which was the component of home visits, and a lot of those home visits came from referrals that came from the schools. And through that, and just doing an analysis of how we were dealing with home visits on top of, you know, how we were dealing with juvenile issues, we decided to revamp the whole program. So from that, over several months, working with our consultants, we created the youth empowerment program, and that program really took place, took effect probably twenty, late two thousand and twenty-one into two thousand and twenty-two. That program, in the past, we may have cited students, and then sent them to adjudication court with fines attached to that. Over this past year, we're either referring into our youth empowerment program, we're referring into adjudication court, but that's also in conjunction with our social services division, so the students are receiving counseling, and the, the fines are not attached to those citations. Now, there may be exceptions, they're very rare, but generally, if a school resource officer has contact with a student, and it results in some type of citation, the citation, it's a must-appear now with a parent or guardian, that did not used to be in the past, before a student could get a citation and really pay it themselves, or choose not to pay it. In two thousand and seventeen, we stopped the practice of putting any of those tickets into collection, so we haven't done that since two thousand and seventeen. Changing the way we do things, changing the court date allows the parents to be there, the court dates are now at four p.m. on Tuesdays, they used to be at Friday at nine a.m., which that can be a hindrance to people who are working, and also taking the student out of school. So having a four o'clock court date, the parents are there, the students are there, we've referred into our social services program, it gives counseling guidance, these come from school resource officers, some of the students are even pushed into our youth empowerment program. So this has been going on for about a year now, and just changing the way we do things, thinking differently about, you know, what, what is giving that citation to a student actually accomplishing? There may be other things going on, and this gives us an opportunity to look at the whole picture, being able to provide assistance if it's needed, counseling, guidance, mentoring, opportunities, and so that's the whole core and premise of the youth empowerment program. That's why we do things a little bit differently here, and it was based on a lot of conversations from the community, from the council, we listened, we implemented a program that we're very happy about. We're still working on a couple of things, our consultants, we do, they're no longer with us, they left in June, and so now we're working on transitioning the leadership to community members, which is something that I spoke about at the very beginning of creating that program, so we're in the process of doing that as well.
Plan that they would transition, and we would transition to a locally-based run structure.
Correct.
So a question I have about the fines. There, there was a, a big article that came out in the newspaper about Illinois schools fining students, and a lot of those schools, or actually municipalities, because the, the fine money doesn't go to the schools, it goes back to the municipalities who, whose officers write the tickets. And a lot of those municipalities actually put those fines into collections. You addressed the issue that we haven't done that since two thousand and seventeen, I'm glad to know that we've, we moved away from that, and I'm glad to hear that you said, you're saying that since at least about two thousand and twenty-ish, how many tickets have we issued, and do you have a breakdown? I know in that article, it specifically said that there were seventy-seven tickets issued at Algen High School, and forty-eight tickets issued at Larkin High School, which was significantly lower than at some of our, at the other U forty-six high schools. Can you, that's from what period to what period?
So that period in, in that article that you're referring to, that period was from two thousand and nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, and those are school years, so that's towards the end of, or the beginning of the school year in two thousand and twenty-one. That's a three-year period, and you are correct, seventy-seven tickets were issued at Algen High School, forty-eight tickets were issued at Larkin High School, so that's a total of one hundred and twenty-five tickets during that period. If also you need to remember, in two thousand and twenty, everything was online, so that's also something that skews the numbers. Last year's, I can give you some information just from last year, so last year's adjudication tickets for the school year, so that would have been late two thousand and twenty-one, so fall of two thousand and twenty-one into the beginning of this year. So we have seventy-five citations that were issued, most of them, twenty-one were for disorderly conduct, some type of fighting offense, twenty for possession of cannabis, fifteen for battery, ten for unlawful possession of drug paraphernalia, three for some type of synthetic drug, two for public intoxication, two for possession of tobacco, and one for criminal trespass. The outcomes for the cases, out of those seventy-five cases, sixty-nine of those cases were referred to counseling through our social services division. Three, there was a fine that was attached, and just so everyone understands too, for the fines, for the minors who do not show up to that court date, and again, we changed the court process too, so their parents could be there, it's a must-appear. The minors given, and the parents are given three times to go to court, and if they don't, we have the school resource officer reach out to the parents too, and at that point, the fine is imposed, but we do not send those fines to collection. So there's many, many attempts made before anything's actually done. So again, out of those seventy-five cases, sixty-nine counseling, three did not show up, one pushed into the youth empowerment program, and the counseling too, we also, the youth empowerment program is where there might be more home visits, or a structure, the counseling still allows the opportunity to be involved in some of the things that the youth empowerment program does as well. And then there's a few that are still in process, in the court process, so vast majority, again, counseling, providing, you know, guidance to the parents, seeing what's going on with the student, and that was the goal of us changing the way we do things. So hopefully, those numbers are encouraging for the community to see that we are doing it, we've changed the way we've done things as well.
So the citation now is not a fine, it's a notice to appear for the student and the parent to basically sit down and figure out, hey, what's going on, and refer people to where they need for additional services, counseling, et cetera.
Correct, and in rare circumstances, there may be a fine, again, there's always exceptions, but vast majority, it's exactly what you just described.
So what are your feelings about the changes? What have you seen, what have you, what's the feedback you've heard from the students, the parents, the officers, the SROs, what's the feedback that you've received?
So a lot of the feedback comes from our home visits that we do too as well, because a lot of the students that may be getting citations were doing a home visit with, and it's been very positive. It's been an opportunity for the parents to ask for resources. I think that also, there's a lot of issues that they may not be able to deal with just themselves, so having, you know, someone there from the police department, but also having community members and providing that guidance, it's been very good. And the school resource officers too, it's been, you know, as with any program or initiative, there's gonna be some bumps in the road, it's gonna take a little bit of time to adjust the process or how we do things, but our school resource officers work with our youth empowerment group, they work with the school, they work with the students, and it's been good, it's been a positive experience, and, you know, we're still learning, we're still growing, we're gonna adjust the program where we need to, but we set out to accomplish, to do something different, and I think we did that, knowing that, you know, that was something that should be done. And in some instances, as I explained, you know, to the council during that time, there are times where students, juveniles, will be taken down to the police station. There are times when there are severe offenses or crimes where this process is not gonna work, but in the vast majority of cases, this process does work, and we're gonna continue to work on it, to improve it, and to ensure that we're being responsive to the community.
One of my final questions, because one of the reasons why this garnered so much attention is because of the disproportionality of who was getting ticketed in, in, in the, in the schools. That's one of the focuses that we talked about here in, in Algen, with our school resource officers and U forty-six schools, and then it was also something that was spoken about and, and covered very widely in the articles in the paper, about just Illinois-wide, looking at the disproportionality of black students being disproportionately ticketed and targeted in, in schools. Of the seventy-five citations that you mentioned that have been given over this, this past year, do you have a breakdown, a racial breakdown at all?
I do not offhand, but I can send that to the council, I can get that to you for tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you. And lastly, because I would still be interested to know, you know, what that looks like. And lastly, the, the time, you said four p.m. on Tuesdays are the court dates, was, was that picked for a specific reason? I know you said that before it was like nine o'clock on, on
The Friday.
Fridays, which probably doesn't work with a whole lot of people's work schedules. I would also think that four o'clock may pose a, a challenge for folks as well, have we thought about doing something later in the evening?
So the four o'clock, obviously, it's after school, we have not had any issues with that time, so I think it's also staff and personnel that can be here, which is why we made it at four, and that's probably the latest that we can. I can check, I haven't, we haven't had any issues with that time, so if we do, that's something that we could adjust, but we have to make sure that personnel can be here, and the people that need to be involved are here. the people that need to be involved are here. So it hasn't been an issue, so, but if it does come up, we can address it.
Because which staff are you referring to that are involved in that process? The adjudication officer?
Adjudication officer, yes, and some of our social service workers, our staff, and then depending on, you know, who from the school might need to be here too, as well as the school resource officer. But we haven't received and haven't had any issues thus far, but again, if it comes up, we can adjust it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? No more questions for Chief Lally before she runs off.
Walk off, not.
Ms. Rocheberger.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Lally, for responding to the community, and it, it sounds like you're supporting our, our schools and our youth and the future of our community. I really appreciate these programs and what you're doing. I also know that we've talked in the past about children with autism that are in the schools. I, you know, as I've said before, I have, I do work with children in, with autism in the schools, and the preponderance of them has increased in recent years, no one's sure why, but it's approximately 1 in 50 children has some form of autism or on the autism spectrum. And these children, they're not good communicators, they have very poor social skills, they can't often follow directions, they can be easily overwhelmed by sensory, the sensory environment around them, and they are in our schools. And I know that we have put a special emphasis, and it is in our contract here, that the, our SROs and the police department in general are trained in trying to recognize children and adults with autism, and, you know, to take a, a special approach to these children and adults. And, you know, I, I know the police department in the last few years has really embraced the autistic community, and they have, have for the past two or three years, had an, an event, and invited autistic children and adults and their families to learn about the police, to interact with the police, to, to see what a police car is, to, so things like that. So I do appreciate that in the last few years, you've stepped up and done a wonderful job, so thank you.
Thank you, and then, you know, I'd like to give credit to Officer Robbie Sobrano, who's really taken the lead on all of our efforts amongst many people, but he has a son who is autistic, and so it, it hits home, and there's also several members of the police department, and, you know, I think it's important that we pay attention to what people are saying and make sure that we deliver. And, you know, so thank you to the men and women of the police department, thank you for the compliment.
Just a comment for me to follow up on Ms. Rocheberger, I've been to three openings, ribbon cuttings for schools for autistic children. So it's becoming more and more of a parent private issue, and they go all the way from 3 or 4 years old up to middle school age, and they, I, I'm not really familiar with how it works, but they have an agreement that U-46 has some obligation to some of those young people as well, and we had, this was a learning curve for the city, when one of the groups came in, you know, our staff looked at it as a school, and it tried to get it to fit the school that, that you would look at it as, as a grade school, and it can't because the children don't interact, they don't play on the playground, and so it's a learning curve for me, and it was, it's amazing, and I tell you, sometimes I'm a pretty stupid guy, and I asked them what the, what the teacher-to-student ratio is, and she says 1. It's 1 to 1. So it's extremely expensive, but the, the philosophy is that they're going to, we're going to help to make them the best that they can be. And so some of them are, it's a real challenge, and I appreciate Ms. Rocheberger's comment that we have to identify those young people and make sure that they, they get the care that they need and they get the understanding they need, so thank you for that.
Anything else? Hey, Ms. Powell?
Just a, a quick follow-up. I, I just want to urge the city of Elgin, EPD, we, we found something to improve outcomes, and I think that's a very positive thing. But it's only in Elgin schools with Elgin police officers. And as a U-46 parent, an Elgin resident, whose child goes to a school outside of Elgin, which, you know, applies to a whole lot of folks, depending on if your child is in an academy or whatever the situation is, I think this just begs the situation for us to continue to work closely with the school district to make changes like this across the whole district. But this is a district issue across the board because they are the ones hiring the police officers. But we, as Elgin City Council, Elgin Police Department, we do have a lot of control, obviously, based on the changes that we made, in how officers show up in Elgin schools. The data that you just shared with us shows that and that it's possible, so now it's time for the MyRAT of other jurisdictions that fall under U-46, their police departments, to do something similar, because those numbers in, in that, in that article were pretty damning. They, they, they did not look good. And as a parent, as a, as a person of color in this community, something different has to happen. I'm glad that we've made some changes, but I'm, I'm putting U-46 on notice, you've got to make changes across the district. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, and I appreciate the presentation overview on the SROs. If, if people of the community wanted to get more information about YEP, can you tell us where they should go?
Yeah, so the, we have a website, you can just Google City of Elgin, YEP, and all the information is there. Everyone who's involved, we're in the process of updating our website too, as the consultants left a few weeks ago, but all the information is there currently. Community Engagement Specialist Bob Witt, who works out at the police department, is in charge of the program, his contact information, phone number, email address is all accessible on that site.
Yes, and also too, another important factor of YEP is that it, the students don't only have to be referred by the SROs or those inside the school, if you have, if you could do a community referral. So it can be somebody that may not be, actually have an issue inside the school, but they're exhibiting issues outside of it. Family members, members of the community, et cetera, et cetera, can make a referral to YEP, so you can go to the website?
Yes.
To get that done.
Yep.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. Announcements from the council. Ms. Ro, oh, Ms. Martinez, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to thank State Representative Anna Mulder for sponsoring Senate Joint Resolution 28. This resolution is dedicated 234-mile stretch of Route 20 as the Illinois Medal of Honor Highway to recognize the service and sacrifice our state's past and future Medal of Honor recipients made. Our very own American Legion Post 57 honor guard and Legion riders gathered at the State of Illinois Secretary of State Office for this dedication this past Sunday. It means a lot to our veterans and their families that have received the highest award of valor. 108 medals, Medal of Honor recipients have been from Illinois, and 3 were born in Elgin. One for certain is buried at Bluff City Cemetery. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Powell?
Yes, I want to thank all of the residents that came out this past Saturday and yesterday for the listening sessions, for the Community Task Force on Policing to listen to the recommendations, provide feedback, a number of council members have participated in that. Really appreciated the folks that came out, gave their constructive feedback, listened to the recommendations. If you were unable to make it to one of the listening sessions, you can go on the, the Community Task Force for Policing website, and there is an opportunity to not only see all of the preliminary recommendations before they come to council, but also provide feedback. So if you were not able to attend any of the listening sessions in person, you can look at all of the recommendations online and provide feedback online that will be taken into consideration by the task force as they finalize their final recommendations. So thanks to all of the residents and staff and council members that have been participating in that process, and, and big, big thanks to our task force members and EPD for all of their work through this long process as well. Thank you.
I have an announcement, last night, we, some of the council members attended the ceremony welcoming new citizens to the city of Elgin, about 125. Because of COVID, they had to skip a couple of years, we held the event over at the Heritage Ballroom. My recommendation is to the council, we've been doing it out of this room for many, many years, and my recommendation is we move it and the city sponsor that room for the ceremony every year. Makes it so much easier, we had to corral there, and in the past, we've had to have people downstairs on the television, and this is a welcoming thing for family, it's in a very proud day, and the city should be proud of what they've accomplished. And it really showcased what they did, and I think that's exciting for our city, but we, a move to the, over to the rec center would be something that would be very much appreciated. We moved it back a little bit this year because of logistics, but it's typically around the July 4th holiday, and that's a good way to celebrate that, so next year, I hope to do it over there. Ms. Martinez?
Mayor, can I just add that at the ceremony, it was important, I believe, to have it at the center because it gave the opportunity for family members to also show up?
Yeah.
Because they were part of the process of years and years to get to the point where people became US citizens. It almost seemed like a graduation, though, people were so proud.
Yeah.
Thank you.